I'll second. Let you call the meeting under Canadega zoning board appeals to your order. We will start our meeting with a pledge of allegiance and that will have a moment of silence for our important forces.
I pledge allegiance to the flag, United States of America, the republic for which it stands, our nation on the ground, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Just starting off here, we do have, I guess we have one person here on Zoom. With our procedure for Zoom attendees, we ask them to stay muted, or acknowledge it was to make any statements to the Okay, we'll be starting public hearings. Our routine is that we will open our public hearing. We request for a variance, and I'll have the applicants present their case of why they wish to have a variance granted. There'll be discussion among the applicant and the board, and then there'll be a time at which anybody in the audience can, or including online, can make any comments or statements. Once we've had that exchange of information, we will generally ask that it's okay to the applicant that we let the public hearing be closed. If that's the case, we have 62 days to make the decision on our, on the applicant's occasion, but we generally will make the decision tonight. Okay, first one is mega engineering for Lisa Roberts and Larry Jocelyn. Owns the property at 3611 County Road 16. Question of rear setbacks area variance of 7.3 feet. 22.7 feet rear setback from 30 required. There you go. You'd like to present your question? If you just give me a moment, I'll just set up this board.
Tony, do you want me to pull up three colored plan as well? The one on the bottom, follow up.
You certainly can.
Okay.
You can just identify yourself.
Good evening, everyone. Can you hear me just fine? Yeah, good evening, everyone. My name is Tony Sentera, the project engineer with Mahara Engineering. Representing the project applicants Angie and Brian Jocelyn, who've joined us via Zoom. For the project at 3611 County Road 16, where it's Lake Road. Just wanted to give a brief overview of the project and before diving into the requested variance, and then ultimately turning the conversation back to the board members, any comments, questions, or concerns they may have. Given that Brian and Angie are present via Zoom tonight, if you do have any questions for the project applicants, make sure to direct them towards them. As I said before, the project is located at 3611 County Road 16. Project site is located between the eastern right way of that road in Canadega Lake. The lot itself is zoned residential Lake District, RLV, and falls under the zoning criteria for lots less than 10,000 square feet. Specifically, the lot itself has several constraints. It is very small, at about 3,300 square feet total area between the right way of County Road 16 and Canadega Lake to meet high water. As such, based off of the zoning criteria for setbacks, there really is no buildable area on the lots. The lot itself was previously developed. There's a single-family home on the site, as well as a porch and a duck in the rear yard. The project's intent is to tear down this existing single-family home and rebuild it, while balancing the needs of our applicants with those RLV zoning requirements and existing non-conformities on the site. Specifically, what's being requested tonight is the rear or lake setback from the second floor overhang of the project zone. With respect to the project's review so far, we have been given preliminary feedback from the town. Our officials, namely Sean Boncheck, Angus Jensen, we've worked with extensively since early May. There has been a period of compromise earlier on in the project when our applicant had closed a layout that would include a building height variance, several coverage variances for building and lot coverage, and because they wanted a created driveway extension that would be considered as lot coverage, as well as the rear lake setback variance that we're requesting tonight. Ultimately, following the feedback from the town, we went back to the applicants. We worked out a compromised site plan that reduced the requested variances. Other review has been done by the environmental conservation board. Their only real comment was with respect to the use of native vegetation in the rear yard. There is a preliminary conceptual landscape and plan showing shrubs and dwarf trees that would be located in the rear yard where there are right now. The intent in providing additional landscape in that region is to soften the appearance of the proposed home from Canadega Lake. In essence, to better meet the shoreline development guidelines outlined by the town of Canadega. So with respect to the rear setback variance, I provided copies of drawings to you are laid out. Shows the differences between the dimensions and separation between certain corners of either northeast region of the new home, as well as the existing home, to the property line taken at mean high water Canadega Lake. See the variation there. Ultimately, with the encroachment of the second floor overhang is the 22.7 feet that is being requested. That being said, in our opinion, we feel that this rear setback variance will be worsened. This balanced with the need to remove the existing porch which encroaches within West Lake Road. And in doing so, the existing building and lot coverages on the site will not be worsened either. They will be reduced slightly. You can see this outline in more detail in the table that's provided on our drawn C3, along with other data for the building plan. With respect to the hardships with the lot, it goes without saying, but the lot itself is very small. At 3,300 square feet, there really isn't a lot of maneuvering that could take place with the footprint. And it's the intent to match majority of that existing footprint with the new one. Although it's not necessarily considered a hardship, what should be factored in is the floodplain development guidelines. With respect to Canadega Lake, the existing structure has a bottom floor elevation that would not meet that requirement, namely being above the base flood elevation of Canadega Lake. For the proposed home, we would meet that criteria, and at that point, there's the need to access the rear lake yard, which, as we show in our drawn C1, would be accomplished through the use of some steps even afterwards to the yard. Even with this factor then, ingress and egress from the proposed home and movement between floors, we've managed to keep the building height for this proposed single-family home below the 25 foot max building height that Canadega has for this size RLV lots.
No, I think, I'm Wendy with Mahara Engineering. I think, I guess, the biggest graphic that kind of tells the story is the blue is the proposed and obviously the red is existing. So we are making improvements on non-compliled with the exception of the rear setbacks. We have worked really hard to try to fit a good balance, like Tony said, between the proposed needs of the client versus the requirements.
Did you guys get any letters from any neighbors or anything?
Not that we received. The only additional comments we have received were from Don Gavins with CLCSD, just regarding some notes for the renovated sewer lateral.
Right, so calls from the owner to the more, like the usual gentleman. Either north or south, I can't remember, but in support of the progress. Said he spoke with the applicant in the year, I believe, since he said, I think they rented out now and that he's never had any issues with it very much. And he also had a variance of something, and he understands the nature of the lot.
Yeah, yeah, they're pretty tight. There's not much where to learn there. So rural life, pretty much with the neighbors.
So moving, we'll get the board, front board can the, also the corner of the house, out of the right way.
Yes, sir.
That's correct. And with the proposed sort of house layout, there would be no roof overhangs. So from an aerial appearance, setbacks from beating the sides would appear to be better.
Are you aware of any decks on top of houses? I know there's a number of decks on both houses.
So I've only seen them on both houses. I'll head to.
On the upper deck?
Yeah, there's a few. Well, they're actually two second tiered porches.
Yeah, I didn't see any of that. Only on the top of.
The blue, the blue one across the road, it's on the west side. That's a recently remodeled property. I think that has a two-story porch with a roof over.
On the west side?
Because I was admiring the ceiling. They have wooden ceiling, ceiling fan, you know, so yeah.
Now, would there be any restrictions with what they can do up there on the deck? If that's a question. The wall, sidewalls themselves are right at 29.9 feet, so we assume there's no real additional weight to do up there that would raise that higher. I'm just, I'm not sure they're aware of that.
Does he know, no permanent structures above 25?
Anything else? I think the landscaping will come under the third wheel. I think it'll be any wood. Might help put some pushers up on the deck. You saw if they could hold it perhaps. Okay. It was recommended for refusal by the Ontario County Planning Board, so we'll need to check the majority. That's that. Anything more you have?
No, I think I would just like to stress that our applicants, as well as the town Canadega officials, their input's been very valuable in terms of their approach to this project. And island backhoe was originally proposed, which certainly was excessive with the number of variances that resulted.
Were there any comments from the audience here or from the applicants on Zoom?
Yes, Mr. Jocelyn, nice to meet you all. I think Tony covered most of it, but I did want to mention that I tried other means to, you know, we don't want to rent out the house anymore. We want it just full-time for family because it's my grandfather's house. And we refurbished the inside and just gut it, but there's so many structural issues inside that the contractors don't really want to touch or remodel. So I didn't want to have to go to these lengths, but I don't see any other way to situation in there. It floods a lot because right now we're not putting, you Tony, we're not even in the right zoning for the floodplain. I don't know the proper terminology. I apologize, but so our house floods a lot. But it needs to be raised for that purpose as well. So if I should take all that into consideration, thank you.
Yes. Identify yourself, please.
I'm Rich Michaels. I live next door to the south. We just had our house all redone about a year or so ago. So we have no problem with this whatsoever. I think it actually would enhance the area. It makes life a lot better for everybody.
You're the house directly to the south?
3615?
Yep, the one that was just redone.
Yeah, you guys, I think you were in for a variance request.
I was, yes. And we did get it granted.
Yeah. Jerry?
This is Tom Lunn.
I'm Tom Lunn. I live next door to the north.
Okay.
And I.
So we didn't need a letter from either one of you? We didn't need a letter from either one of you. You were here.
No, we showed up. But I have no objections to it. They're very good neighbors. They have been renting the property up until now. With this improvement or total reconstruction, they are not going to rent anymore. And that makes me happy. That makes Mr. Michaels happy. I've lived there long enough to know that somewhere along the line, the town re-zoned those properties that are all on postage-stamped plots, mine included, Rich's included. And so if you want to do anything, you've got to have variances. There's no clean deals. So it's my opinion that, and I can ask them, but I, my understanding is they're not changing the footprint at all. And the house next door to me to the north, back a few years ago, they were granted a whole series of variances, the biggest one being 28 and a half feet on the height. They're staying under the 25 feet, so I don't see any reason why this plan couldn't be approved. Thank you.
Just to clarify, that so that it's not in the same footprint, correct? Or is it, it's just, it's shifting? I just want to say.
I don't know. I, my understanding was it's the same, you're not increasing the footprint.
Okay. Yeah, not incre, but is, are you, you're not shifting anything?
No.
Just improving the font?
So the blue is the new footprint.
Right.
The outline of the red is the existing.
Okay, got it.
So you can see where we're making it.
So technically, it's better than what it was.
Except for the rear setback, which is like the second story overhang, so.
Got it.
And that's, you know, we needed access for stairways inside, so it really eats up a lot of space for the living areas. And just to make.
I just wanted to clarify for.
Yep, yep.
But the front porch is different.
Right, that's going to be.
That's taken completely off.
So technically, the footprint is slightly smaller.
Slightly area slightly smaller.
Yeah.
But same position.
Just for perspective, how many square feet will the final product be?
I have a number actually. With respect to the home, ultimately like 1,200 to 1,250 square feet. Not including a roof overhang, which there is none.
Any other questions from the board? Are you comfortable with our discussion and what you presented? If you are, we could close the public hearing, after which we can make, take no further information from you. We would have 62 days to make a decision. Generally, we'll do it the same night. All right, we'll close the public hearing. Okay, the next one is Richard Kimberly Gray, owns the property of 4959 Highland Beach Drive. Question aside, setback area variance of 4.0 feet, when eight feet is required. Your location of a generator next to the existing home. You're welcome.
Hi, I'm Kim Gray. My husband is supposed to be here too, but I don't think he's going to make it. In between, we just tore down and rebuilt our property of 4959. And the way that the house, we had to give a variance for the way the house is positioned. Down a lot because everybody's house is built to the, to the north. The person to the south of us, there's built to the north. The person to the north of us, there's is built to the south. So we were kind of crunched in the middle. And we would like to put a generator in the north, north side of our house. And it's just a little bit too tight on the lot line to cast a code. I have pictures if you want to see.
So it looks like you're putting it next to the air conditioner?
Yeah. And the person to the north of us, their generator is on the same, they would be on.
On the, okay.
You did provide a picture showing if you put where you didn't need a variance of these out in the middle of a small backyard.
Be on the middle of the roadside yard. We'd have to put pilings in front of it to keep clouds from getting at people from backing into it. It just would not be very pretty.
I guess that would be the only other way you could do it without a variance.
Yeah.
Do you hear the neighbors? Air conditioning, your generator?
We hear it when it tests.
Yeah.
It's fine. It's once a week. Doesn't really matter. I mean, we could.
Maybe you could sync it.
We could do them back to back or at the same time.
Yeah.
Yeah. We asked the neighbor to the north of, north of us, and he doesn't, he did not mind at all if we pulled there in between the two houses.
You're running large.
He did send in a letter.
That is, okay.
We did have a letter. Neighbor letter. Bob really. Is Bob this neighbor?
Yes.
You didn't have any other excuses. If you're worried about
We didn't sound this way.
And can't be a button go through.
We never.
Any questions the board has of the applicant? Any questions from the audience here or remotely there on? No? Are you comfortable with what you presented?
Yes, the only thing I could add is I actually took pictures between the two houses of what everything looks like now. And where the air conditioning can really go with it, basically.
Probably most of us is a bit of a sight. For your, we'll go ahead and close the public hearing. We have 62 days to make a decision. We'll get a decision tonight. You're welcome to stay around for the discussion the board has, or we can talk to you tomorrow. Okay, the next public hearing is Liberty Restaurants Development. Requesting a, this is a 3225 State Route 364, requesting a front setback area variance of 20.4 feet when 100 feet required. I'm sorry, 79.6 feet setback when 100 feet required. So it's a 20.4, 20.4 variance.
Good evening. Brett Steenberg. I'm the engineer for the applicant Liberty Restaurants. And their proposal for a variance. The existing parcel is occupied by a former financial institution. I believe it changed use a couple, uses a couple of times when I was with the previous planning meeting and talked about some different uses. The applicant is proposing to construct a fast food restaurant, Popeyes Fast Food Restaurant, in the location of the existing, existing building. It's the restaurant itself will sit, will sit back 79.6, yeah, 79.6 feet from the state highway when 100 feet is required. The existing financial institution is setback 78.8 feet. So we're actually moving the building back about eight tenths of a feet, alpha. And the, the reason, you know, looking at this site, looking at different iterations when we started, started working on the concepts, you can pick up maybe a few additional feet shifting the building to the west. The applicant and did not, you know, is not really in favor of making that, that change for a couple of reasons. One, between where you see the queue for the drive-through aisle there is and the existing parking lot to the west of there is actually a very nice landscape firms, large trees. And it was imperative that we try to, try to maintain that because I do think it actually offers offers some aesthetic value to, if you're sitting at the intersection where you're not looking over the sea of parking at Roseland Center. It kind of offers that green space buffer. So we really didn't want to impact that. That being said, if we did move the building further to the west, we could go with what would be more of a traditional fast food drive-through design, which is where your, your vehicles stack alongside your curb line. Now, similar to what you have at McDonald's and Starbucks and Arby's. Where they stack along the curb line and you've got your parking on the outbound side of the, usually angled one way on the outbound side of that drive-through lane and drive-through route. The applicant, whenever possible, is vehemently opposed to that because they like to separate the drive-through traffic and the pedestrian traffic. When people stop and come to the site, you know, we would like them to be able to get out of their car, walk into the facility and it's even exemplified even more when you start looking at accessible parking spaces and accessible aisles and getting to the accessible ramp. I've seen multiple times if fast food restaurants with the accessible ramp processes the drive-through and somebody who needs to actually be able to get through those cars and get to the ramp actually can't get to it because it's blocked by a car until the drive-through queue moves. So then whenever possible, they try to move that, that queue to the outbound side and separate the two traffic. And this, this design actually is almost what we consider our ideal design for that. Because it really does, it does a great job in separating, separating those two, those two uses. And it also, this design provides a, a good amount of stacking in the drive-through queue. Nobody wants to see the drive-through queue backing up out of the parking lot and packing traffic. In some cases, it even backs out onto roads and locations. In this particular case, it would never be able to do that because of the internal design of the site. But it does, this does provide excellent vehicle. But it does, this, this does provide excellent vehicle, vehicle circulation through the site for both drive-through and, and sit-down patrons while still maintaining that existing landscape buffer. The footprint that you see, not only the building, but the building and the asphalt parking in the drive lanes that you see on this, on this plan, actually are all within the existing paved area, even shrinking the paved area to the east of the site a little bit. With the exception of just to the south as it comes around that side, it does approach into some green space. But overall, we're actually reducing the impervious area on the parcel, which we feel is, is good as well from what is, is there existing. And I, I think from a environmental standpoint, to be able to maintain within that paved and hardscaped area, this site design and site development is a plus. So going through the, the variance criteria and questions. Will the, will the variance create undesirable change in character of the neighborhood or detriment? It's an existing situation. The bank is actually eight tenths of a foot closer. There's actually a larger footprint on this site. This building is actually quite a bit smaller, especially the front edge along New York State five and twenty. It is, is a shorter front edge of the building compared to what the, the existing bank, bank is there now. The, and also we're able to maintain that mature landscaping in those trees for the most part throughout the site, which we feel is a positive for the development with, with the acceptance of this variance. Given the configuration of the parcel, it is impossible to achieve the intent of this site design without a variance. If, looking at the hundred-foot setback line, and you can see it running through that, through the site there, in order to achieve that, you would probably, in, in maintain that one hundred foot, you would have to rotate and turn the building, which always, which would put your either drive-through lane or pickup lane on the state highway side of, of the building, which instead of the front of the building and the glazed area itself, we feel that from a, from a aesthetic standpoint, that, that having the front of the building facing the state highway is preferable as well. The variance is twenty point four percent. We don't feel it's substantial because the existing building is a, actually a twenty-one point two percent variance from the, from the required one hundred-foot setback. Again, it will not have an adverse impact on the physical and environmental conditions of the neighborhood or district for most of the reasons I've, I've already explained. And this is fairly consistent with the corridor along, along Loops five and twenty. The variance is not self-created, the, the configuration of the parcel. And the, obviously, you can see that from the existing building that's there with the configuration of the parcel and the hundred-foot setback off the state highway. It's, it makes it very difficult to construct a, a building in that location. And I do want to note that that right-of-way boundary is actually a pretty good distance as well off of, off the edge of pavement, I believe, of, of New York State's five and twenty, which is what that one hundred foot requirement is set off of. As you can see with the, the yellow line there, you've actually got a good green belt between the right-of-way boundary and the existing edge of pavement where the vehicles are traveling. Within that is the, is multi-purpose or walking path and actually a row of landscape trees as well. Be happy to open it up to the board and answer any questions you may have.
So you're going to reduce the amount of asphalt?
Yeah, there's a slight reduction in the amount of asphalt from the existing condition as well.
It looks like you're getting rid of the second entrance hall.
Yeah, so we're getting rid of the second entrance into the, it's from a, from a traffic standpoint, circulation standpoint. Actually, in, in my opinion, it helps with the overall traffic circulation through the retail center as well because it, it puts all of the vehicles entering and exiting the site onto that loop road on the outbound side. So you're not trying to force them, again, where the pedestrians are walking to these stores from, from their vehicles.
What is your seating inside?
Twenty-four seats.
Twenty-four, and I, how many parking spots? Is that about thirty or something?
Twenty-two, twenty-two parking.
Twenty-two, okay.
Any questions? Any questions from the audience?
Oh, I have a question. Where, where is the sign going to be located, the main sign?
We're, we're not actually having a freestanding sign. It'll just be public sign.
Right, on the building. I mean, are you going to have, what's the requirement for that?
Uh, we had, that'll be next month.
You're, you're going to see that, that's up with November, that's why.
Okay, okay.
We were working through the signage when we submitted this and we'll be here next month for it.
Well, I worked in this building twice over the twenty-year history that I've, I've been in the financial services business, so.
It's actually a beautiful, nice building.
That's right. You can get rid of it.
We can get rid of it, okay.
And I was like, we should open up the, the one end and just take money, right? There's no reason, so, yeah. That's it, as much as sense.
Financial statement?
Yes, yes. It was fun.
Anything else? Are you comfortable with your presentation and we can close the public hearing?
Absolutely, thank you.
You have sixty-two days to make your decision, but typically we'll make our decision tonight. Welcome to stay around. For the public hearings, correct. Okay, the board discussion.
All right.
Starting with the first one, that's three-six-one-one County Road sixteen.
I have an issue.
I, yeah, I'm sorry.
That's all right, go ahead.
I've, for them personally, they mentioned they would be improving their footing issue, which was, makes sense for them, but that would probably, you know, be for the greater good. And I like that, the right-of-way encroachment being eliminated. I think that's a, that's a positive. So if everything else was, you know, was, everything came out even, I think the world's still a better place if we stay out of the right-of-way.
Don't see an awful lot of guesses to support the neighbors.
Right.
There's not a lot of other choices. It's pretty much within the footprint.
And it's so tight.
Back at Park next to it.
Yeah.
There's not much room there.
Not at all. Well, plus they're reducing the overhangs too, right? So.
Correct.
Yeah, I don't have a comment.
To call a question.
Applicant is requesting area variance rear setback of twenty-two point seven feet when thirty feet is required. A seven point three rear setback variance required. Shall the applicant be granted a seven point three rear setback variance? Bob Hilliard?
Yes.
Dave Emery?
Yes.
Kelly LaBoye?
Yes.
Chip Saylor?
Yes.
Shannon Chevieu?
Yes.
Okay, this will be based, the benefit to the applicant, applicant does outweigh the detriment to the neighborhood. Therefore, the variance is granted. It's based upon the facts that you presented at the public hearing tonight and in the drawings that were received. The, certainly the lot, it's a lot of constraint on what one can do here. And I think, I think they've done a nice job of working with the, with the town to really reduce the number of variances. And I think it's a minimal variance compared to what's there now. Improve safety by increasing space alongside of the road.
Certainly no objection from the neighbors.
No.
Certainly within the character of the neighborhood as well.
What does that denote the ECB comments for Meyer?
Right, yeah.
It's, I think it's rare that we get one with such a minimal request, right? In that area.
Okay, ready to vote?
I'm ready.
I'll tell you where he voted, sorry.
Now we have the reason.
I was ready to vote on the other one.
Yep, okay. Next one, Richard Kimberly Gray, owners at forty-nine fifty-nine Island Beach Drive. Site setback of area variance of hopefully no feet. The square, the location of the generator. Any comments on this one?
You had mentioned that to avoid the variance, the, the other placement would have been, you know, actually, you know, silly.
Did you see it? Did you see the picture?
Yeah.
The pictures were very cool for this one. Yeah, there you go. With having the paint on the ground or whatever they did it, that was just. Yeah. Perfect, yeah, it was fun.
No, I have no issue.
Call a question?
Applicant is requesting area variance side setback of four feet when eight feet is the minimum. Four-foot side setback variance required. Shall the applicant be granted a four-foot side setback area variance? Bob Hilliard?
Yes.
Dave Emery?
Yes.
Kelly LaBoye?
Yes.
Chip Saylor?
Yes.
Shannon Chevieu?
Yes.
Okay, the benefit to the applicant does outweigh the detriment to the neighborhood. Therefore, the variance is granted. Board decision based on facts presented tonight and the materials sent to the, to the filing office. I mean, this is a minimal variance, not really substantial from what allowed by the downtown code. Placement of the generator to avoid any area variance really is unreasonable in terms of appearance and functionality of the property.
There's no concerns about the noise because the other generator for the neighbors right next to it, right? So it's also something you can manage.
And it really doesn't change the character of the neighborhood. Okay, we're going to roll here.
Keep it going.
Okay, Liberty Restaurants Development? No, that's on this.
Kelly's pretty low, we sold this one.
I know, right? Like, nah, just go. No, I mean, honestly, it literally has been a bank for over twenty years. And, I mean, I was in there in two thousand and it was that way then. And there's never been a bank, and I, I don't work for a bank. So if that tells you anything, it hasn't been a bank for over twenty years, so.
I, I think to me, the, the selling point was the diagonal line that, that went through where you wouldn't be able to avoid a variance. And I don't see that this is, this is about as minimal as I could get out of such a thing.
And it's technically reducing the.
Yeah, reducing the variance. It's also really improving the traffic flow through the area.
Yeah. That needs some work over that.
And maintaining a lot of greenery.
And we're a pretty good laboratory for drive-throughs. Tim Wharton's Wendy's, that one gets pretty wild. So this makes.
It's much more straightforward.
It's, makes good sense compared to some of the layouts.
Yeah.
The only question I had is if Popeyes is going to affect the chicken barbecue sales that go on.
I doubt it. Because there's one across the street too, and that doesn't end the hearing. Chicken barbecues everywhere.
That's within our review.
Applicant is requesting area variance front setback of seventy-nine point six feet when one hundred feet is the minimum. Twenty point four front setback areas required. Shall the applicant be granted a twenty point four foot, four foot, front setback area variance? Bob Hilliard?
Yes.
Dave Emery?
Yes.
Kelly LaBoye?
Yes.
Chip Saylor?
Yes.
Shannon Chevieu?
Yes.
Okay, the benefit to the applicant does outweigh the detriment to the neighborhood or community. Therefore, the variance is granted. Board decisions based on the facts that's presented during the public hearing tonight and also on previous documents that have been received. Variance will not change the character of the neighborhood. It is, might really have an adverse effect on, in fact, improve.
Yeah.
Improve the variance and improve traffic flow. It maintains a lot of the greenery and berm areas.
And that pavement's all, it's all broken up now.
Yeah. It really needs repairing. It reduces the verbiage, verbiage areas. Conditions, which I didn't do on the other two off the end.
Oh, yeah.
Conditions would be as presented tonight and then it would have to be started in the year. And those conditions would be applicable to the other two as well. Okay, thank you.
I'd like to, an aside, I, I was on the ordinance committee. We used to have heated discussions about signage. So you want to probably do your research with the car dealerships at all down there. It's been, it's been lively trying to get on top of that, of that issue, so.
Understood. I've, I've done a lot of, well, I wouldn't say I've done a lot of research. I've done a lot just looking at the signage on the building and the magnitude of it compared to other signs and that and stuff. The issue we're going to have is the quantity of signs versus the size of the signs.
I think even, wasn't it TJ Maxx? Wasn't TJ Maxx one of them? So that plaza in particular, we've got a couple of people to mark different signs.
You can even look at our history with that. That's, you know, it's been very interesting. It's, it's either the number of signs or total, or total square footage within, but it, it's been very.
Changed a little bit.
Yeah, and I think it has changed since some of our more contentious ones. But just to give you a heads up.
Understood. And, and, you know, the applicant, the applicant's great. I'm sure, you know, for you, that's something you feel comfortable with and stuff. You know, they're, they're receptive to coming into the community and being part of the community and stuff.
I think to awareness of where your comparables are coming from, the mutual, they're not Hopewell or, you know, they're from the Thomas Brothers, right? They're not the Citi.
Right, right, yeah.
And that happens a lot just because you're not from here.
No, I understand that. Actually, that stretch is very small there within the town. And I did look at those boundaries and I, I know some, the only reason I included some of the comparables outside of there is more character of neighborhood.
Absolutely.
Rather than, because the neighborhood doesn't necessarily follow its bounds, but it, it does. And, and, no, I, I do understand that, that that's, that's a small, small section there. The town, town finger, you know, area there because being out of the area, it's looking at the boundaries, the district boundaries.
Right, right, it's hard to, to tell, yeah, sometimes.
Yeah, so. I appreciate, appreciate all your help and so, John, I've been grateful with everything. Question for you, if you don't mind, of next question.
Any thoughts?
Right, I did that on Zoom. You know, so I, I, it's easy, I like doing it in person because, you know, you know, it's kind of.
What do you think, Dave? What do you think, Paul? What do you think, guys? Yeah, right?
I want to know what happened with the ECB meeting.
Yeah, right? Oh, yeah, yeah.
Yeah.
Are you sick? Are you sneezing? You're sick?
I know, I, I just have, uh, the mucus.
Oh, yeah, sure, that's all right, I heard COVID's over.
Yeah, yeah.
Yeah, right?
I just talked to a client today that's, uh, he's like, it's like three, three weeks going into it, I'm like, really? You just got it for the first time, like, ever? Ah, that's my one taste. I think I've had it a couple times already, so. And I know I've had a wine, so I'm pretty sure.
The long version that they're learning more about with COVID, it's pretty, it's pretty rugged.
Yeah, right?
So the kids, the kids I give them, whether it's polar or whatever.
We were, we were in Greece on the second, almost two weeks ago, and we were almost one week before it started to rain in my life.
Ah, no. I had it in December.
Two days.
Yeah, last time, the last time it wasn't as long, definitely it was only a few days and I was fine. But I did lose my face on the second round. But I came back.
I tested positive, I've never had a pain since, but, and I only even tested myself because I was a good man.
My daughter had, my younger daughter was kind of like, I have lived, I've never.
It's not a happy, you know, it doesn't have a happy ending. Yeah, yeah.
Some people just, you know, they have good. I know people that have got around people who don't have it, so, or at least they don't.
We have five in the house, mom and dad came down with it. And then, my husband was gonna go to work on Monday, I told him, you better test, because he tested positive. I had tested the day before, negative, he got mad, he's like, what the hell?
Thank you.
I don't have any other business.
No requests for rehearing. Uh, any referrals from town management? Ordinance committee referrals?
Not yet, they're very busy, getting a solar.
Oh, great.
Yeah. They have a laundry list, I mean, it's very long.
Solar's a big deal.
Solar is a big deal.
Yeah.
Okay, approval of the minutes of August sixteen?
I read over them, I didn't see anything, anybody else told me?
I read them, I didn't, I'm like, did I really say that?
Somebody make a motion, please?
I'll make a motion.
Second.
Doctor?
Aye.
Aye.
Anything else anyone very want to bring up?
Uh, no. No?
I, I did want to know, did you ever meet with?
No, I did, I did not. John brought up the.
I, I knew, I knew, I heard what he said, but I didn't know there.
And so I haven't, and I haven't heard anything from the ECB. And there seems to be this letter which is being generated, which goes on.
Well, Kim is not a member of the ECB.
No.
And a very active member, um.
And they're both students, are they?
I, I do. Yeah, she, uh, so I, they're doing good work and I think they deserve, they're looking at, they have a memo. That's when, uh.
Finalizing it on Friday.
Yeah, it'll be finalized.
I mean, I think with some of these things and structuring our, um, responses of, I mean, we need to do more, you know, these organized and terms of saying, you know, ECB for this.
I, I would suggest, I'm sorry, I, I would suggest when we have one of those early, if Chris wants to give us an in-service, I like to go to meetings and see things, but I don't want to, I'm not representing ECB, I'm out, I'm doing, or I mean, ZBA, I, I'm on my own doing it. But I don't know if everybody understands that or what we need to say to people, that we, you know, as individuals, we can do these things, but as a member of this body, that's different. And I, you know, and I don't, I don't know if you people feel the same way, but I, I just don't want to be going to a meeting representing ZBA.
I think the other thing is, and sometimes in our, a lot of, like, on the, this is one place that, you know, certainly, all controversial, but I think something like that, you can't necessarily, you know, you don't have to go along with ECB, I mean, what we were looking at was the placement of the house, and that doesn't have anything to do really with a lot of the landscaping, so, but we can make recommendations to the planning board as part of our approval for them to look at such and such, try to minimize the removal of vegetation or whatever. I think we can make some recommendations like that.
Well, I don't, so I mean, with that particular case, I mean, I think what my feedback was was a few members that probably would have liked us to deny all that. I mean, that's just, and when we were having our conversation during, you know, John, John was there too, and, and, you know, we were really having a conversation about, you know, do we deny it or do we, I mean, this is what Kevin Oldman says and this is what, you know, so we were taking all the information and I, and I were kind of damned if we do, damned if we don't, like, approach, so.
That's the way it's gonna be, yeah.
I, I remember like, and Kevin Oldman carries a lot of weight.
Oh, yeah, by far.
And based on what he said, he was kind of on the fence.
Yeah.
And so, that, that made it, you know.
They said that was the best placement, right? I mean, they could have placed it elsewhere and made just a giant mess down there, or do we, you know, and, and one of the comments that John said was, it doesn't have to do with the size of the house, really, it's about the waterfall, right? And that's kind of what we're.
And, and the other thing you learn too is that whether something's alive or not, the root system underneath is what holds the banks together.
Right.
And whether it's alive or not, and whether it's the kind of tree that bothers some people or whatever, but, but the, you've got to have something holding those banks, you know, together. Uh, it is what it is, and, and it's less than perfect what we had, but I thought it was, it was doable, and, and as I understood, and maybe somebody could be more persuasive.
Well, and that's, you know, and like, the, the plantings and stuff, I mean, some of them, the stuff that was down there is, is already invasive and they wanted to remove it anyways, I mean, so, you know, we, like I said, it was, it was a toss-up.
We started with a wall and basic species, we're gonna.
Right, right? Well, to Dave's, to Dave's point though, yeah, but you made a comment saying, look, if we don't want parcels like these, then why are they available? Or why do people buy them? Or why don't, you know? I mean, we should, right? I mean, that was kind of your point, was.
Well, all right, can I go into another comment that I, that I have, and I'm just interested more in your opinion? You guys have been on this zoning board longer than I have. Doug is pushing, and I, maybe it's done, this agriculture overlay district for the town. And I don't know where the, I don't know if they can even, they have enough members to even vote on it, or is it done? They had a public hearing on it, the last board meeting, on the fifteenth.
Yeah, it's passed.
And, and the, my only question was, is, of course, they won't have to do any PDRs anymore because there won't be any more development, the way that they've set this up.
It's a fairly small area.
It's a huge area as a percentage of the town. Put it up on the board. It's a big chunk of, you know, it's a lot of land, anything over seven and a half acres. And my question was, from a zoning perspective, is it subject to variance? They basically carte blanche drew that, you must have it, I have it, the, you know, I'm not asking you to do it now.
No, I can get the, you wanted to go get the map.
I, I've had the map, I just don't have it with me, but my question is that I think it's, it's difficult, one thing I, I do like about the zoning part of thing is that we can look at each and every different property and evaluate whether or not it, you know, this should apply. The way this overlay thing is set up, they're not gonna, they're not, they don't want any water, they don't want any sewer, they don't want any utilities to go in areas within these areas. And maybe they should see how big an area this is, because it's, it's a lot of the town. Goes all the way down past Cheshire, goes all the way up, all, all that area from Michigan, County Road thirty, County Road thirty-two, all that, and then all the way to the other side of town. So I don't know how you can say it's a small part of the town.
What it says is, I mean, any parcel that's over seven acres that is requested for subdivision that needs water and sewer has to have Convo or equivalent for that extension.
Does that extend from part of the conversation we had this morning, or when, you know, sort of, and not really?
Kind of, right, that there's no capacity, that we don't, that there's no way it would even, there, the ability would be there to have sewer in that area, really, basically, unless a developer really has an endless amount of money to provide sewer.
Yeah, that was a good presentation. Terry actually gave, gave a good presentation. Actually, you know, I wonder if it is, it's visible, right? I mean, you guys might want to tune in to that.
Yeah, it was a great, yeah, we had our CIC meeting about the transportation plans, um, County Road twenty-eight sewer.
Brickyard Road.
Yeah, and then County Road Harpitz and Water.
It's interesting, you should hear.
Well, it's more than interesting if you have a lot of property.
Well, but you could hear just the water issues that, that are happening already.
Well, the way this thing was presented, what I was seeing is that they're going to do everything they can to discourage anybody to put any, any water or sewer within this overlay. And it's all, it's, it's thousands of acres in, in the town.
But you're also asking, what are the zoning implications?
Yeah, is it subject to variance? Because they pretty much, and I don't know that it is.
Is it? I know, because actually, if, right, I mean, that wouldn't be, it would be separate.
This is a great way to just prevent any development in the town and have somebody else pay for it, the landlords.
Yeah.
And, and, you know, farming is changing. This is not going to be the same game in its ten years from now. I mean, none of it, but it's, I just, I mean, obviously I'm very frustrated because it affects me, and, and the other thing that I do think is something the town needs to look at, if you're gonna have a public hearing, you better find a better way to alert people than, than the, than the newspaper. And I know that's the legal way to do it, but I don't know of anybody that takes a newspaper anymore, I don't.
Right.
I didn't know about it, and I am on the email list for the town.
Right, so we're looking at that, and that's our, our goal for next year, is to meet people where they're at, in that the younger generation is using Twitter and Snapchat, emails are always the way to go, nobody uses Facebook anymore, how are we, MailChimp, maybe, how are we gonna get notice to everybody?
Well, if you have something that affects your own property, if it affects an owner's property, don't you think they should be personally notified?
Right.
I don't know, it seems to me that, you know, when you go out and change the zoning law for, for what you own, and you know.
Yeah. Sorry?
Another battle lost.
Not really, not really. First of all, first of all, you just went off on some tangent. You were heated about it, obviously.
Well, certainly I am, I mean, I'm, I'm sitting on some of the worst, you know, we'll get into the prime soil thing with Doug forever today, you know, they, they basically, it's like the fifties passing in regents now, we've just dumped it all down, that's what they've done to soils, yeah.
Right.
Prime soils or any soil that's within ten miles of a city, and the city of Canada is a house. That's what they've done, and that's.
It's not bad.
I would love to see somebody make a living off of my two-hundred-and-fifty acres of prime soil. Doug, go out there with that.
Do it without a rock, is it?
Let's go very claim, remember Brickyard? Why do you think Brickyard was made where it was?
Yeah, right?
Start growing solar panels.
I can start.
Yeah, right, there you go.
Well, I'm hoping they're gonna allow it. Because I, I don't want to get into brick business.
No kidding?
Okay, anything else?
No, I think, uh.
Motion that we adjourned?
All right.
You missed, less than an hour, but it's okay.
Let's take a moment.
Thank you for letting me have my tie right.
That's all right, we were genuinely concerned.
It does affect the town, it does.
Yeah, right?
That's a good question.